So we can get out of here in a reasonable time. This meeting is called for a special use request for the Park District Construction. And we call it, I'll admit that it's 602, that's a title. I like when you look outside and see the United Department of Defense.
Yes, that's great.
And it's still such a flag. Can we call, Bob, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Gillis.
Present.
Mr. Wazelkowskis.
Present.
Mr. Engler.
Present.
Mrs. Pringle.
Present.
And Mr. Smith, present. We have a form.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Would you step forward please? Would you raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so have you died?
I do.
And your name?
Dominic Igizio.
Okay, and you are the park district president?
Executive Director.
Okay.
Mike's the president.
Hello, Mike. Okay. I guess we'll turn it over to the secretary, then you may sit down.
And then if there's any specific questions asked by Darren with us, he's from the yard.
He's also, okay.
Okay.
I have some exhibits here that were presented to the board, and I'd like to show them to everyone present. Exhibit A is the Village of Midlothian petition application for Midlothian Park District, 14500 Costner Avenue. Exhibit B is the amendments of a site plan review committee meeting dated January 16th, Exhibit C, the site plan, the amendments of the site plan review committee meeting dated February 7th, 2019, and that has two pages. Exhibit D, special use deposit to the Village of Midlothian from the Midlothian Park District. Exhibit F, a letter mailed to all the current residents from Midlothian Park District within a radius of 250 feet concerning public hearing. Exhibit G are the addresses of all current residents within 250 feet radius of the proposed development, and that's two pages. Exhibit H, that's a list of the PIN numbers of all current residences within 250 feet radius of the proposed development, that also is two pages. Exhibit I is a plot of survey of the proposed development. Exhibit J is a plot of survey of the two parcels of the Park District soccer field Exhibit K, this is the site plan of the proposed development showing parking scheme and a total of 217 spaces. Exhibit L, the site plan overlay of the proposed development. Exhibit M, a site plan of the parking scheme and its relationship to the emergency vehicle And exhibit N is the proposed exterior view of the development. Mr. Chairman, that is all, are all the exhibits.
Okay.
Bring them up with the presentation now.
Please.
You can bring them up or make the presentation, make the presentation what they're going to do.
Would you like to come up for it, please? Would you like to make a presentation on what you'd like to do?
Sure. Hello, Darren, calling here.
Hello, I'm Darren Schrader. I am the project manager representing the architecture firm that is assisting the Park District in these plans. So what we're looking to do here as part of the application today, as we've read in our petition, is in four parts. So the first part is in regards to the parking. And in the parking, we had the meeting with the constituents, the mayor, and other people of the village to determine what was the amount of people that were going to be utilizing the facility, and based on the actual zoning ordinance of the Village of Midlothian, making a determination on what the required parking is for your ordinance, and then providing all of the parking on our site. So our first kind of go at this was to provide parking off-site, but now we're providing all the parking on the land that is owned by the Park District. So meeting that comes to the 217, we're exceeding the actual requirement by seven spots. So there are 210 normal spots and then seven accessible spots, which have been distributed around the facility for access to the series of different entrances or amenities that are on the property.
Those are ADA?
Those are ADA accessible parking stalls, based on the Illinois State Accessible Code and the federal regulations that we are required to follow.
Okay, and someplace I read in there that you are trying to put as many handicap parking spots as you can near the entrance?
We are putting four of the seven near the main entrance that will be utilized the majority of the time. So we have two that are remaining, that are existing near the park, so that people that want to come to the park, Bremen Park, the property in the north, still have access to those. And then we have moved one that is closer to the new parking on the west side of the building that will then serve the secondary or potential trade show or event entrance, and the splash pad that is to go in.
Okay.
And the next part of the letter is in discussion with the height. So in order, the only component that is above the 30-foot requirement is the fieldhouse itself, and that is for the Park District to be able to get the internal clearance, to be able to have the sporting events that they want to run as programs, the building is up to 36 feet. So we're asking for that variance as well, that additional six feet in space. That is really just the peak, we're not talking about the whole group, we're just talking at the peak of the building. Then we're also then asking for a variance, which actually was requested by Public Works, that the landscaping along the north property line between the Park District and the house not be planted with the requirements because that is a drainage ditch that needs to be maintained, and that planting would actually prohibit the Public Works from doing the job that they feel is necessary. So we are asking for that variance because it's part of our project.
Right, you have the ditch near Costner Avenue?
Yeah, so there's a drainage ditch that runs along the north property between the Park District and actually all the way across, but specifically normal zoning ordinance based on the village ordinance, we would have to provide more screening between our property and the residence because it is a, it's not a commercial parcel.
If it was basically 145th Street was extended all the way through, it wasn't the property, it would be that boundary.
Okay.
And then the last one is, in order to obtain as much parking as we could on-site, we're asking that the islands, the north ordinance requires a parking island, which is green space every eight souls, I can't remember exactly, and that was, we're requesting that be waived as well, and that was also discussed with the, with the village at our previous meeting in order to get that waived.
I think that also allows better access.
Sure, for truck access, yes.
For the, for the truck?
For the fire truck, yeah.
34 feet.
It was 40, 43 foot for the fire truck.
Right, yeah.
And that, that line.
Yeah, that was.
That's done as well in here, yeah.
So just a little bit about the building itself, you know, it's in addition to the existing gymnasium, and it has the fieldhouse with the running track, the amenities spaces, the multipurpose rooms and offices that the Park District are going to be operating on.
I didn't notice in the site plan committee meeting minutes, and I talked to the superintendent, and it must be a typo because on page three of the site plan, the second paragraph in the bottom, to Dominic's surprise, that he would like the engineers to prepare everything, it said that they will revise the plan to do away with Kenneth and provide new parking spaces along the west side of the T-ball fields.
Yeah, it's, it is.
So if you add that in there, I was told it's a typo because your blueprint's shown.
It's the east side.
Your new blueprint showed it, it's on the left.
Yes, yeah, it's the east side.
So we're on the same page.
Yes.
East side.
Yeah.
It said, the meaning of the zoning board was that the, and it sounds like you addressed this, the existing village to be enlarged to accommodate the fieldhouse and the health facilities, and that's what you meant by additional height?
The, the fieldhouse, yeah, the additional height is specific to the fieldhouse component itself. The rest of the building, the two-story section of the building that will house the offices, the multipurpose room, and the fitness center, we are not asking for variance on that portion of the building.
So they said, for example, we want to play volleyball in there, maybe a higher ceiling?
I, I understand.
Or a walking track as well.
For walking track.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Two questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if we could allow the petitioner to go ahead and address the specific elements of granting a variance, specifically, the zoning board is going to have to make findings in your favor in order to grant these variances, and so you should be given the opportunity to address them. The first one is, and we should probably take them one at a time for what the request is, and I believe the first request is going to be the parking, well, you actually don't need it, you have the required parking.
Yes.
Okay, so then the next one would be the waiver of the green space within the parking lot. The first element would be, no variation shall be granted unless the applicant shall establish that carrying out the strict letter of the provisions of this title would create a practical difficulty or particular hardship. If you could just address that, it doesn't have to be anything elaborate, but it should be in the record.
Well, I think what Darren had said, the most important thing is, we're just asking for the variance along that northern edge, and part of that from Public Works doesn't want along there, so that's, we're more of along the kind of lots of trees there that help with you guys.
Okay. And the unique physical conditions, the subject property is exceptional as compared to other properties subject to the same provisions by means of a unique physical condition, including irregular, substandard size, shape, or configuration, exceptional topographical features, or presence of the existing used structure or sign, whether transformation, whether conforming or non-conforming, or other extraordinary physical conditions, particular to and inherent in the subject property, that amount to more than a mere inconvenience to the property owner and relate to and arise out of the characteristics of the property rather than the personal situation or preference of the current property owner. I didn't make that up, that's in the code, so if you just want to, again.
I'm not sure I'm answering the question, is I underdignity question? But do you ask me any of these questions?
I believe. I think the question goes to the unique situation of your property, again, addressing the, the fact that Public Works needs to get in there.
I think it's a unique piece of property, probably the most unique piece of property in the village as, you know, the way it's shaped and it's parked. So there's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of landscaping, a lot of green space that already exists on the site.
Okay. The next one is not self-created. The aforesaid unique physical condition is not the result of any action or inaction of the property owner or his or her predecessors in title, and that it existed at the time of enactment of the provisions from which a variation is sought, which created by natural forces or was the result of a government action other than the adoption of this title. So you, the question goes to, you didn't request or do anything to the property to make it so that that area where the runoff is, you didn't create that at all?
No, sir.
Denied substantial right to carry out the strict letter of the provision from which a variation is sought to deprive the owner of the subject property of substantial rights commonly enjoyed by owners of other properties subject to the same provisions. I think you're just going to have to address what happens if you're not allowed to, to use the property with the variance.
For the landscape ones.
Right, right.
I mean, we'll plant trees there, it's basically you guys, the public sorts.
Oh, no, it, it's not, it's not about us guys, it's about the code. And so with the board, for the board to find in your favor, you have to give them that information.
We just want you to address that.
Yeah.
And if you don't understand it.
Look, I believe I can answer this one, that in the event that the variance is not granted, then the Park District will follow the ordinance and provide the landscaping that's required for the ordinance, and that the maintenance of the drainage ditch, which is not the responsibility of the Park District, will, is, and it's, we've essentially, the Park District will follow the rules at that point.
Thank you, we just need you to add the table.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
The, not merely a special privilege, that's number five, the alleged hardship or difficulty is neither merely the inability of the owner or occupants to enjoy some special privilege or additional right not available to other owners or occupants of other lots or properties subject to the same provisions, not merely the inability of the owner to gain a greater financial return from the use of the subject property. Again, I think that's saying that you're not requesting this variance simply because you're trying to get a financial advantage that other owners in a similar situation as you would have.
We are not.
And again, and again, the board is required to make these findings, they can't make them up on their own, you have to give it to them. Number six, conformance with the title and planned purposes. The variation would not result in the use and development of subject property that would not be in harmony with the general and specific purposes of this title, including the provisions from which a variation is sought, or the general purpose and the intent of the comprehensive plan. I think that, that is just a request asking you to explain how the variances you're requesting goes in line with the Park District, Park District property and its uses.
Well, take it or I'll. Okay, so, so essentially, the Park District, these are existing conditions within an existing parking lot and an existing drainage ditch, and what they're trying to accomplish is to provide the flow through their parking lot that is required as best they can to provide the parking, they're not trying to create or take advantage of the situation that would be the, in order to grant, to garner these variances from the, from the village.
Okay. Number, number seven is, there's no other remedy, there is no means other than granting the requested variation by which the alleged hardship or difficulty can be avoided or remedied to a degree sufficient to permit a reasonable use of the subject property. So I think you would just probably respond that, that you want to put landscaping up, but the village needs to have that drainage ditch there, and so.
Yeah, I think the Park District is trying to be a good neighbor, and it is, is trying to, is trying to assist in something that is, the village is responsible for, that they have to enter onto the Park District site, and we're granting, you know, we're essentially following their lead in order to help businesses.
And the last one is, minimum relief required. The requested variation is the minimum measure of relief necessary to alleviate the alleged hardship or difficulty presented by the strict application of this title. So we are only deviating the minimum amount in order to make these, to make her satisfied with the offer.
That's why he gets paid to be impressed, what can I say? And he's right, it is a technicality.
Sure.
And as we've found out in the past, when we've got the I's and press the T's, somewhere down the line we get ridicule and bad things seem to come forth.
While we're all here tonight.
Thank you for your patience, and I, I love the idea. I just have.
I, before I go any further, I have to ask the members of the board if they accept the village attorney's addressing the variation, does everyone accept it?
I do.
You do? You do? Okay, fine, thank you. Just to note that the site plan committee also approved the height variation in their minutes, so height variation is, is no problem, or variation of various landscaping that will have to take place. They agreed to that, okay.
And I would assume your answers with regard to the height variation, as well as to the, the elimination of the landscaping requirements for the islands would be the same as for the work and the drainage ditch in terms of landscaping there?
You have to humor me a little bit because I'm just trying to understand these plans. And they're beautiful, I looked at the pictures, it's going to be quite an improvement. Is 145th Street going to go all the way through from Kilborn to Costner?
No, it's going to remain just the way it is, you know, as a parking lot, it'll be parking.
So the existence of 145th Street will not be a through?
It's still planted, I mean, you guys can still build it if you need to.
Okay.
Because we're south, we're a little bit south of it.
So essentially, the existing curb cut for 145th Street will be blocked in for parking, and then the curb cut moves down to the next, further south. So you are still able to go through the parking lot based on the amount of people and children that are going to be here, we felt it beneficial to job that access to slow people down. So, and then as part of that, we are providing the north directly, the house directly to the north with their own driveway, so that they're no longer, because right now they are gaining access to their property through that 145th Street, so that is something that's part of this project.
Okay, so that won't, they will not have access into the, where 145th Street would be?
Correct, so they're, they're now coming, their driveway will be coming off Costner Avenue.
Okay. And, thank you for that. For the people on Kenneth, is that, is it all fair going to go through, or is it still going to stay like it is?
It stays like it is.
There'll be no parking on Kenneth?
There is no parking on Kenneth anymore. So that was option one, and it's been strictly.
Good, because that is a residential area, and we have to respect that too. That being said, and you did eliminate one of the T-ball fields.
No, we did not. That was very important to the Park District and important, we feel, to the community to be able to retain both T-ball fields, that's why we're seeing a configuration to the park.
There's only two, we did have three.
Oh, well, you had four, yeah, sorry, that was before.
Four in all, right.
And I do have some good news to report on that, is the Park District did recently receive a grant for $400,000, which includes upgrading those T-ball fields.
Fantastic.
So if you fix up, that was with the plasma.
That's great, that's.
I think it's important, early on we had our, our meetings about this project, one of the residents that lives back there had wanted a permanent backstop put there, I think the older kids were hitting balls into their yard, so that's part of that project, will be a permanent backstop put in that corner, because the fence will come out a little bit to protect that neighbor from balls.
That's the first house on Kilborn?
Yeah.
That answers the questions that I had, but now I would like to ask the residents who are here, if they have any objections to what's going on, to any of the, any of the proposals that we have, state your name.
Should I come up?
You can do what you wish.
Oh.
You can come up if you wish. You can come up if you wish.
Yes, please do.
Good evening.
What's your name and address, please?
My name is Mark Hamilton, address is 14533 South Kilborn, I live right next to the T-ball fields.
Okay.
So I had some concerns over mission, and just wanted to make a correction to your last statement here, concerning that permanent backstop, just like to make it clear that we never requested a permanent backstop there. What we did was, we had seen that there was a backstop being used out in the field, and thought it could be better used to deflect balls from coming in the yard.
Okay.
Not that we, we mind that so much, but the kids had a hell of a time jumping over that fence.
It fences six feet down.
Oh, it is, oh, yeah. Supposed to serve a purpose.
Correct.
Anyway, relating to the, the new parking lot there, I had two concerns, one directly and one indirectly.
Would you address, so I can?
I'm sorry. The direct concern is that it's, the additional parking behind the T-ball fields seems to give further access to the public, to the immediate residential area behind our house and our neighbor's house, most of which are not fenced in. It's a complete lack of security. Not only is security an issue, but noise, we imagine is going to be an issue, since we are all exposed to the, what's going to be the biggest, longest part of the operation. And so we're wondering, does the Park District have anything in mind to deal with the noise and possibly people going through that area? And it is your factory, we understand that, but we have a neighbor here that we're trying to protect. Over the last few years, since different features have gone missing from, you know, the fence line along the Park District, there have been break-ins in our homes. So we have concerns about safety in that area. The other concern is.
Felicity, just one minute. Doesn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there a fence that runs from Kilborn almost all the way to Costner with one opening, or one opening in it?
No, sir.
It's not?
No.
Or that's been removed?
It's been removed up to the point of the T-ball fields.
So that's the only fence that's left there?
That's correct. Now that, there used to be an area of wooded property back there, which has now been designated for the retention pod, that has been clear cut, making it an easily accessible area.
Okay.
Does the park have like cameras or anything, at least for security?
I think, when our house got broken into after that, when a portion of the fence was removed, we found out that the Park District did have one camera, unfortunately, it only polices the Park District building itself.
Well, maybe that.
And cameras are, of course, an afterthought.
True.
Okay. Do you want, do you want the Park District to address your questions one at a time now?
Oh, certainly.
So, so I guess, first question is, are you concerned about noise coming from the building or from the parking lot?
Initially, the building, but now let me see where the parking lot is, it's going to be built.
Well, address the parking lot first. We only anticipate using that overflow parking for less, which we think probably is four times a year, so we kind of plan on having it closed off, so it's not going to be for daily use, so there'd be really no use for anybody to park there during, if you know what I mean.
And how, how do you plan on closing it off?
Well, if you see the drawing, it's, it'd be really easy to put that gate, put a gate right there.
Someone has to be at the entrance to draw.
Right. And then, you know, you can dress the way it needs to be.
Well, yeah, it's, it would be hard for us to say that there's going to be noise coming from a, from a building, the fact that we have an exterior masonry wall that's The fact that we have an exterior masonry wall, that's a cavity wall at that point. It's, uh, in the event that it was found out that noise was escaping the building, it would most likely be through an open door. So I think the Park District would have to keep mindful of not dropping open doors. If it's still persistent, I think that the Park District would certainly engage in a discussion to provide additional sound acoustics in the building to limit the, uh, any, uh, any sound coming out of the building. There's no, there's no operable windows as part of the building. The, uh, as I mentioned, between zero and eight feet, uh, that is a solid masonry wall with CMU and, and brick on the exterior with an airspace. And then above that is a three-inch insulated sandwich panel that is also acting as our, uh, our weather barrier and our paper barrier. So this isn't, uh, isn't a construction that should, um, that should create a, um, reverberation through yelling or, or, or impact balls, especially since all of our panels are protected by hanging, so that no balls can start any portions of the metal, unless it was from outside, which, uh, I don't think the Park District can protect.
So I know, to be more specific on that, concerned about the sound of basketballs ricocheting off the wall. But, um, the existing structure right now, we get a lot of noise. There are parties and there are vents that, uh, over this right next to the door, coming out of this door. I sympathize with this guy. Eleven o'clock at night, there's parties going on at that building. And for the many years when we didn't have air conditioning, we could not even, you know, you can hear it loudly and clear. So, um, I, I believe that, um, events that will take place, that there's a high probability that events that will take place in the new structure will have an equivalent effect, uh, just magnified, since the, the new structure will be again, encroaching further into the neighborhood. And as far as the, the gating for that extra, uh, parking lot, I get what you're saying. That you plan on using it for only special event purposes. However, I don't think you can DRP that those are four, five times a year. Because systems change. And in order to maintain the, the operating cost of that building, I believe that you're going to generate revenue. You're gonna have to do it somehow. And that's gonna be, the more that you have in there, the better you are able to pay for that property.
I, I, I'm, I'm part of the programming there. For the most part, our special events are during the day. So like P days is set for at, like, at night, but most of them are during the day where.
I completely understand. However, this building is about four times larger than the existing building. I've been a plant manager for a big long time and I know it takes to, uh, pay, gather, uh, sort of, uh, sort of, uh, structure. Your, your, that's how a thoroughly developed is, you're going to need to generate more income to innovate the property. That means more events that in later progress that use more, more traffic. And that's a concern for my neighbors. We, you know, I don't think anyone here is against Park District expansion. But you have to realize that you're expanding this Park District that sits probably two blocks away from any main road, right in the heart of, uh, in the heart of the neighborhood. And it's fairly unique to any other Park District that I've seen in the area. Not just that, but in order to facilitate the traffic that you're expecting and you're stacking, uh, facilities, you need to expand the parking lot. You're doing so in which the two main roads entering and exiting the facility are simply two lane roads. With that, there are no sidewalks along the entire Park District and half a mile in block Kilborn Avenue. So there's a safety issue. So what I see here is increased traffic, increased noise, more safety issues, more, uh, these issues, tranquilization issues for the neighbors, for the ones who, who sit at the heart of this property. And, um, I would just like to think this through. See what, what we can do to accommodate, again, you know, a, a Park District in a stranded building is a good thing. It's gonna be good for generations to come. But you have to, out of all the residents in this town, the ones at the epicenter of this project have the greatest concerns for all the reasons. We have children, my neighbors, all the neighbors moving in have beautiful little kids. Their safety is an issue. That I'm being able to sleep at night in the summer while there's soccer games going on or dance parties or something going on is an issue. And I would like that addressed.
Well, just as a resident here who's going to a lot of her parties and that myself personally.
I feel your music too loud.
Yes and no. I agree with you, if it bothers you, it's too loud. But you have to understand that in this day and age, that, uh, these things are all over. If it's too loud, the village has an ordinance for loud music too late at night too. And if they go past that, it would be addressed whether it's a Park District or not. You mentioned something that I didn't quite understand. You said the safety issues. And I'm not sure, you know, Kilborn is a two-lane road, Costner is not. And those are the two roads that I'm sure you're referring to.
Costner should be a two-lane road, right? Is it Costner a two-lane road also?
Yes, but Kilborn is not really a two-lane.
Yeah.
Well, if you think about it, it's one and a half lane.
Okay.
Which is a.
So, but part of that is due to, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too far into this, but part of that is due to the residents that live in that section not wanting to put sewers and streets and curbs and rudders in. And all those residents, that was addressed to them years ago to do that, to bring it up to date. So that safety issue, as you're saying, would go away. My biggest safety issue is what the kids going back and forth to school in the narrowness. But that has nothing to do with what the Park District is trying to do.
Agreed with, with regard to the resident's property. But the longest piece of land that is missing a, a sidewalk is the Park District property. Now, that doesn't solve the matter, I just wanna put it in perspective.
Okay. Does your property have a sidewalk in front of its house?
No. Does not seem to be a reasonable thing to have mine with the only piece of sidewalk in it when I live next door to something that doesn't have it.
I don't think that's the reason you don't have a sidewalk.
Uh, yeah, that is.
Cause it comes with streets, curves and gutters too.
I'm sorry?
Comes with streets, curves and gutters.
Right, I remember the, the referendum or?
No, it wasn't ever a referendum. It was a proposal.
See, at that time, my neighbors to the south of me were in their eighties. And the neighbors next to them were in their eighties, early nineties. Nobody was gonna put in a sidewalk on that side. My next street ever stopped. Next door to me is a park that didn't have a sidewalk. Me putting in a sidewalk would have been just like we was.
And I don't, I don't want you, I don't want you to even consider putting in a sidewalk. My point is that, uh, it's not required of the Park District to put in a sidewalk on Kilborn or anyplace else where it's not addressed except under immediate property, which is under proposal.
Right, I can understand that, certainly.
So.
Can I join in, please? Dr. Susan Keelington.
Sure.
Same property address? I don't think the debate here is if whether or not there is a sidewalk. I think the safety concern was the needed traffic that is going to have to increase in order to supply your revenue or keep the building running.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not if, we're not splitting.
I understood, I understood that. I was just trying to answer your question.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I am not suggesting or in any way demanding that the, the Park District would do that. That's not in place.
Okay.
However, the safety issue is still in place due to lack of, you know, in part because of the lack of that, uh, those structures. Again, as, as I've looked around from Village to Village, the closest, uh, closest facility in equal proportions to this one that I could find that was not off of a main venue was, uh, a half a block in, I believe that's the whole block of the building.
Okay.
So there, there are issues to address in the area. I don't know what you can do about it, what's your thoughts would be on that? So let's stick with the, the, my second issue, which is the, the potential for approachment of, uh, of, uh, wanting the neighborhood into the neighborhood and the noise. Perhaps what I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do to deter that? Cause, uh, so now look what you're doing, that's, that's a easy open spot.
I, I think, um, the other issue I'm hearing about my sound is, you know, the existing gym is, is horrible. I mean, the windows are in bad shape. There's no sound protection at all. Those are all being replaced. Part of that one whole wall will now be inside. So I think the new construction definitely going to control a lot more of the sound, um, than currently is done. I mean, the other, the other situation, the other thing we could do is that we could just extend that fence all the way to the corner of the building.
So are the fences existing?
That might go a long way to, to keep people out.
Can I, yeah. Can I just say something about the fence because somebody out there read the joke and it's a six-foot fence and baseballs are going over. So as a six. There's a lot of people in this room who know I love baseball. Coached it for many years, played for many years. But baseball's not an issue. The six-foot fence was in place because it is a T-ball field. It's not used for T-ball anymore. People come to play baseball, we're gonna have all the favor of that. We didn't request, did not request a permanent backstop, simply made a commandant, hey, you gotta stop there. It's not being used. So that was the concern about the fence. So the fence needs to be taller if we're gonna keep the fields there, I believe. Extended for safety and possibly raised higher also for sound barriers, possibly. That is some initial thoughts, but.
Well, I don't know how much sound barrier you're gonna get on a cyclical fence.
Agreed, I, uh, I've heard.
I didn't mention cyclical fence.
No, I did. Cause that's what's there now.
The fencing, yeah, would, would be deterred for keeping people out. But as far as I know, the only thing that would act as a sound buffer are like evergreen trees. You might see them planted along, uh, noisy areas of, of roadways. I know a lot of different Park Districts do it, they're fairly thin, decorative type of trees. I've been talking to a relative of mine who's a village planner out south here. He had mentioned that those are absolutely those problems.
I mean, we're, we're gonna be good neighbors.
Yeah.
We have no.
I think, I think so. They've met all the things that we have asked them to do. And I think the least thing of their detriment to, to you as a neighbor would be not to listen to you. And I think they listened very well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm glad we had this opportunity because unfortunately we were not able to meet a lot of the insurance, uh, insurance MIs after our first one. But, um, we also, uh, came to the realization when we saw, you know, certain things happening around, uh, the property that we had missed a few months ago. So we're here to help.
As long as, I don't know if the village has a requirement that they can come through?
They do. I believe they do. There is a six-foot junction right there.
Well, if you're talking about.
So are the baseball fields or T-ball fields? And if they're T-ball fields, are they gonna be blocked off for baseball?
Well, we never block them off for baseball. I can't stop a neighborhood kid from coming in there. I mean, like, but, but we do not program it for baseball. But I think, I mean, going along with your, if we did a six-foot fence with the evergreens, I mean, that would definitely be a possibility. If, so if the village ordinance did that we can't have a eight-foot fence, I don't think that.
I believe we could investigate, uh, this reason, you know, the, uh, privacy issue, if I should say that. And, uh, you know, we, we, we talk together about competition.
And it sounds like, it sounds like you've got a communication there. So neither one of those issues need to be addressed at this particular hearing. But we're, we're glad to hear it. It doesn't, it has no consensus on this. This young lady has a question.
Well, not a question. I just have a comment because I live at 145th in Kenton, narrowest street in town. And I have that big ball field right off of, uh, you know, the Middle Oathian Turnpike. And so it's fireworks every Saturday night and everything. And, you know, you can't do a lot about the sound, but the traffic, my husband and I would sit out on, like, Saturday night, you know? The heaviest traffic is be after the ballgame. You know, now if there's events at the, at the, uh, you know, the new park, you know? They're gonna get out at night. Hopefully a lot of the little ones are not out. You know, the traffic will be the heaviest when an event ends. You know, it'll be more of a constant flow before.
Sure. And no one leaves at one time.
Yes, and, and that's what we noticed. We thought the same thing because we're a through street all the way to, you know, 147th. And so it would go from, you know, the Middle Oathian Turnpike and we thought there'd be speeders and all that. It wasn't as bad as we thought, but the traffic is very heavy when an event ends. And that's probably what.
Does it exit via the Middle Oathian Turnpike?
Well, they, they block it off a lot of times. So it's go. Yeah, the street is blocked off and I used.
The turnpike, really?
Yes, it's blocked off.
The other end over.
Yes, it's blocked off. And I used to come home from there and I couldn't turn onto my street and I'd have to go all the way around to get a.
Top of those guys, that's.
I know. I just went around it. I'm like, I live here. You know?
Well, that's right.
Give me a ticket, you know?
You know, and there's, there's gonna be another issue that may be more of a concern for the board in the future because, uh, again, parking on those streets, uh, all around the neighborhood. I know it's been, uh, which is probably looking at the trend of the rest, the traditional parking.
The parking on the street will not be loud.
Yeah, no parking.
It's as simple as that. And our place force a very good enforcement. These are issues that come up all the time. I'll be right with you, ma'am. These are issues that come, I'll be right with you. These are issues that come up all the time. There's two benefits. One of them is, and you missed this one, that you own the property and it's going to increase the value of your property as well. So it's a, it's a little give and a little take.
Yeah. The only, the only reasoning that gets me on that is that, uh, what's, what's the point of that? What happens when your property increases and you stay there?
Well, I've been here since nineteen thirty seven.
Your taxes go up, so you pay more property taxes? So really the benefit is if I were to leave.
You live in Cook County, what else do you say?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that.
Okay, do you have any, do you have any other issues that you'd like to, or not?
I, I just like to ask you a part of this question and I'm not trying to be smart when I say this. But the benefit to you, if you stay there, is you have a great facility, you can come and use that you don't have right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was addressing property.
We think it's gonna be great for, for everybody who lives in the neighborhood, so.
You know what?
I'm excited.
I'm a little, of course, I'm a little apprehensive on the word staff, so if you want, it's nothing personal. But, you know, these, uh, these issues that come up, we'd like to get with you guys.
Absolutely.
Or some normal.
There you go, you opened the door.
Yeah.
Now the communications is there. If you don't take advantage of it, she'll. And I don't want to drag this out any further after you don't have any more.
I do not have any more, thank you for your time.
Ma'am, would you like to state your name and address, please?
My name's Elizabeth Hanson and I'm, I live in the Dolling property.
And where?
Right, the Dolling property, 1444 Kilborn, right in the middle of the park.
Okay.
And.
On the other side of the street?
Yeah. On the other side of the street, by the Cross Street Park.
Right.
And, um, I, my question is, is this new parking, are they gonna enforce that they use the parking lot and not the street?
Absolutely.
Because that's how it happened.
I don't know what they're gonna do about the parking on the facilities, but the parking on the street will. I don't know what they're gonna do about the parking on the facilities, but the parking on the street will definitely be enforced.
Because they have, they keep telling us that they're going to enforce that it's, there is signs saying no parking and I think, and there's still parking there.
On the street?
On the street. We cannot get out of our driveways.
Well, anytime that happens, you call the police department?
My, my brother has done that previously and now my brother's deceased and-
Now, you have to do it, I'm sorry.
Now, I have to do it.
Absolutely. But, anytime that you have called the police department, have they not come out and straightened the issue up?
No, they go to the opposite side where the, what is it, the passenger or the short block. They always go to the short block. By that time, the people get up, run to their cars, hitting their cars and leave. And then they're banned five minutes later.
Okay, that's an issue that's kind of out of our control. But the police department will come out and enforce that no parking. And if there's not enough no parking signs out there, that can be addressed by the village as well.
Yeah, we do need more, and we need the parking signs there all the time. Because some of the time, it's only there during the T-ball season.
I'm talking about pipes in the ground?
Pardon me?
I'm talking about pipes in the ground with no parking on this side of the street? Because there is no curbs. Is that an issue, uh, superintendent, that we couldn't address?
Bring up Joe Sperry, Park District side, and ask the ordinance.
Ask the ordinance, it's, isn't there an ordinance?
I don't know, I'm not a street snob. I can bring up Joe Sperry.
All right, we'll do that. We'll bring it up to our superintendent of public works and we'll find it out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Because we can't get out of our driveways.
Well, we wouldn't like that. Anybody else would like to say something?
My name's Scott Murchin, I live at one forty-four, five-four, Costner, I'm the driveway guy. How about, like, if you're putting in a new driveway, how about get access to my garage, like, parking the street? Like, how is that gonna, how do you do this?
Yeah, no, I understand. So, I, we're gonna have to sit down with you and work it out. So, because we're gonna, the intention is to essentially, through the course of construction, is to leave that area as it is right now and then do that last. And to obviously, you, you, the least amount, yes, the least amount of disruption for you. Um, whether you can park in, to practice your parking lot for, for a time being, or whatever. And just making sure, yeah, you just wanna make, yeah, the last thing we wanna do is, you know, tear your driveway and then not talk to you. We're definitely gonna be communicating with you. Yeah, we're gonna be communicating with you consistently. That's the construction manager who's not here tonight. Uh, we will get you in touch with the field superintendent and one of the vice presidents of the company. I will be happy to give you my contact information so that you can stay in contact with me. So, we limit your disruption to this to get your new driveway.
Another thing, uh, the noise doesn't really bother me, I mean, other than it's like, uh, disturbing. But sometimes it does, there's like tailgaters, partying out, there's like booze bottles all the time. How's that gonna kind of-
Us, we're just gonna have to work with the police department because that's, no alcohol allowed in the parking lot.
I mean, it's really, I mean, it hasn't happened, I mean, it's almost like football.
If you see it being done, there is no alcohol allowed in the parking lot.
Yeah, there's, we'll definitely post it. If you see it, you're gonna need to call the police.
Because we're not there anymore, so.
Especially now, if you see it.
Well, no, I mean, I noticed it over the summer, never-
If you see it going on, the best thing is call the police.
Yeah, we can also match it to the chief, we'll match it to the chief to kind of control that area. And they're not gonna be able to really do it on construction stairs, but after that, we'll definitely have them.
I just noticed a during event, like, guys out there.
I understand.
Right. And, and this is a little question, but I always maintain, I know it's technically not my public works area right there, uh, north and south of the, um, drainage ditch. I've kind of promoted, just to be neighborly or whatever. I was just wondering, I was planning on going to watermelons this year and I'm kind of gonna go over between my fence to the drainage ditch, that maybe an issue with construction?
Well, no, it shouldn't be, it should be an issue with the, with the construction.
They were like mad last year, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because-
Public works maintains that, not the park district.
Right, they, they always-
So, as long as you're not crossing onto, if your watermelons wouldn't cross onto the property, because ours still fence.
Yeah, I'm gonna go there.
Yeah, ours still fence is required to be along the property line to contain any runoff, any potential sediments from entering to anyone else's property. So, ours is, it's essentially setting six inches to a foot from our property line. And if you're gonna have it south side of that, it's not-
Your fence would be on the south side.
It's gotta be inside our property line, yes. So, wherever the property-
Thank you.
My name is David, I live right next door to the park district, one point five.
Your name is what?
David Carden. I live at one forty-five, thirty-two Costner, literally right next door to him.
Okay.
Uh, my question is, I guess you're gonna update your cooling system? It's, when there's parties, they open the doors.
Yeah, we do.
It's like you said, they, they throw their bottles and their candles over my fence. It's just the, the, I know, from up the house next to our park district. I know it's gonna be loud and everything, so I'm not complaining about that. It's just, uh, we can supply that, so if they're not opening up doors, it's gonna be too hot in there.
Right, right. Yeah, absolutely.
And like I said, those windows are gonna be replaced with something a lot more energy efficient. You should definitely-
You must see your guy from the dumpster too, telling people-
You don't get to fight, you know? Yes.
And they're going to, it'll update your property and I can understand your concern. I used to cut the grass over there for a while, seventy years, myself and Mr. Strange. And we tried to make it as neat as possible because you do live.
Yeah.
And these people are dedicating themselves as the friendly park district. And they've done that at this public meeting and it's an open meeting, so we can hold them to being friendly too. For your sake. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My name's Tatiana Ross, um, I recently moved over there, um-
Where do you live now?
February, um, seventh.
Okay.
Um, one forty-four, forty-eight, Kilborn.
Kilborn, okay.
Um, and I have a question, is there gonna be like, um, do you know, when is it start? And about, how long is it gonna last? And are there gonna be like directionals of our traffic or some shit gonna be, you know? Because with Kilborn, being that it's a one and a half road, it is really tight. I see kids walking through everything, so is this really tight on yourself? Are there gonna be like directionals, where signage or?
Okay, so, I'll start with the traffic. Uh, as long as the construction manager will be responsible for bringing the traffic, uh, there will be no road closures as part of this, especially on Kilborn. There will be some disruption on Costner when we do the new curb cut, but that won't close or compete access. Uh, the contractor will obviously need to be, uh, scheduling deliveries to make sure that they are not, uh, parking on the street because that is illegal. So, they have to bring all of their stuff onto the site, which will be fenced in during the time, okay? So, uh, we can certainly discuss with the contractor that no, to limit or put no traffic off of Kilborn, that all the traffic, because it's a bigger road and it's providing half of the street. Especially since it's got curb and, and sidewalks on it. Uh, when, as to when it is start, uh, we are submitting for permit tomorrow. Um, so that process will dictate on when we get to start. So, it's our hope that we're starting sometime, we need people, okay? With a thirteen-month construction schedule. Now, the exterior side of the construction will be, uh, a less time period. Once the envelope is closed, then mostly the construction will be happening inside. There will be construction lighting that goes on for saving the security. So, one, uh, people do not break in to the, uh, construction site and destroy, try and steal tools or materials. So, there will be some of that. Um, but we will work with the community in order to not be disruptive to, to the neighbors, um, during that time.
And the two parks, the, the park that's in front of me, um, on Kilborn, are those that being, that's part of the construction, right?
The, the T-ball fields?
Well, I'm, they're from Kansas.
Over there, no, there's no work going on in front of Texas.
The only thing we see going on right now is that there was our challenge course that was on the construction site that's being relocated, a part there. And then we did receive that grant, so those little houses that you see, um, in the park, those are gonna be upgraded to some newer, um, top block type features. And then that like rubber tiling that's all curled up and kind of driven in there, that's gonna all be replaced. And then along Kana, we're also gonna put in, um, some outdoor things.
But the big parts will remain on the-
Okay, yeah, so the park. I'm gonna thank them, I think we're the board, so I'm gonna go over, they've been asking me to get it over.
That will be on the-
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have some more, Dan, like, her, I live next door to her.
She goes next door.
Anyway, are they going in safety of the kids? Are they going to be putting, uh, entrance from the parking lot down by Kilborn? So, that the kids coming from school can go down Kilborn to one hundred and forty-four? And then along the park property or walk apart trail in order to get down to-
I'm sorry, I almost understood your question.
Okay, like, how they have on the, the half street in front of us? They have a path going over the ditch.
Okay.
So, kids can walk through past that with the trail. But down on Kilborn side, there's no way, the kids have to go on the street. There's no way they can get into the-
And, and there's nothing going to, I don't believe there's anything going to change. They're not gonna put a, a path or a sidewalk along Kilborn side?
There is a path already on Kilborn.
There's a, there's a-
There is an exit.
There's an entrance to that walking path at Kilborn, one hundred and forty-four.
Correct, correct.
Right, is that what you were referring to?
I'm, I'm, the concern I have is they can get onto the path, the walking path.
Okay.
But then, there's still kids that still walk down to one hundred and forty-seventh street, on Kilborn.
Okay.
That need to get from the walking path to the Kilborn. And I'm talking about, you can get it from one hundred and forty-fifth, you can get it from Kilborn to the walking path. But there's nothing from one hundred and forty, or one hundred and forty-four, you can get from Kilborn to the walking path. Which you can't get from the walking path to Kilborn on one hundred and forty-fifth.
Well, you can take the circle and then exit.
When you make the circle, you have to go all the way to the middle of the parking lot on the other side.
So, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding, what are, what is your direct question?
The question, so are they going to put something over the ditch on the Kilborn side? So that they can get out or park?
Oh, on the Kilborn side, yeah.
On Kilborn side. To get out.
Well, you already have a crossing path, a way to cross the ditch, uh, at one hundred and forty-fifth street from the walking path there.
On the side? Costner side?
No, it's at Kenneth. It's just, it's just a little bit, little bit west of Kenneth. There's a crossing of the ditch at that point there. Now, for the kids to come across, they'll have, they probably would have to go-
On the other side, over there.
Yeah, they'll have to probably walk, if they're gonna walk the path, they'll have to get on one hundred and forty-fifth street and then go back to Kilborn if they want to, you know, if they want to continue.
But then they have to walk through the parking lot.
Well, I think there's- I think during construction, I don't think the kids will be allowed in there.
Well, this is in general construction, this is in general. Will they put a part of the construction so that they can get, when school starts again in September? Or next year, will they be able to get out of the park onto the-
Onto Kilborn?
On Kilborn side.
At one hundred and forty-fifth?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I would imagine unless they go into the parking lot, no. They're, they're, they'll have to use the existing parking lot if they're gonna walk back to Kilborn again. Uh, you know, from that, from that walking path. Because you can see the-
We, we have bold plans to do that, but we can take it under our eyes.
There is a sidewalk that goes all the way from the Kana entrance all the way to the end of Kilborn.
Yeah.
Along the parking lot.
Along the parking, along the parking lot. I just, I-
Yeah, uh, by the T-ball field, there, uh, there is a sidewalk there, but not-
Well, I think if I heard what the gentleman said for the park district is that, uh, the existing field as it is with the walking path is not really changing.
Yes, I'm guessing, if they could like extend the walking path onto the end of the parking lot with the gates for the parking, they have a gate there for parking.
Probably for a park district meeting and ask them there. I think, oh, it's just a long meeting.
Since you understand what you're using.
Yeah, we're trying to, we are trying to, you're right, Mr. Yon. But we are trying to appease the lady. They're not going to add any-
They're saying they have kids coming from school.
Well, that's a, that Kilborn site is a real hassle with the kids anyway. One is too narrow and you get the school bus and the car going down there at the same time. You get a lot of problems.
And we do.
That has nothing to do with this issue today. And I don't mean to, to say that your statement isn't important, because it is. But I think that's one that you'd have to address to the park board themselves at a park board meeting. Uh, I don't know if they're gonna change their plans, we're just trying to approve the plans that we are, add to their plans. We're just trying to approve the plans that they have submitted to us. So, if you want to address that, I'm sure that they will, if you ask the two people in front of you, they'll tell you when the next park board meeting is. And you, I'm sure you're more than welcome to go to it. I'm sorry, but I can't answer your question. Anybody else?
Yes.
That's all that counts? Anybody else? Okay, and I'll ask the question again, that's twice I'll ask you for the third time. Is there any other resident that would like to address this issue at this time? There not being any, I would ask the secretary to take a, a poll of the board. Does, uh, does the board have any questions at all? Any further questions that they'd like to address? You, you read this already, didn't you? Need to do it again? This is for the labor board? And it's a bill for each one, you know, part of the islands? And then go through the whole thing and do it again for the- Okay, for, for the parking isles, for the parking islands, okay. Is that, is that what video wants it?
Parking islands. And the other one was the, uh, height guards.
The height guards. No, we took care of the height guards, right?
No, we, we had to do them all because we didn't, we didn't, everyone had to turn up to speak for. So, now we're gonna say, Jesus, dude, now you can go.
You can do it. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just a- Okay, parking islands and the height of the building.
One at a time.
Okay.
Then we'll see the parking, just everyone in favor, and then we're done.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to- I, I have your attention, please. Excuse me. Attention, please. I'd like to address the board at this point in time. Is the board in favor or, or not in favor of the parking, parking plan for this, for this project? Yes or no, forever, just from the board? Or is, do you have any objection to the parking plan or any concerns? No? No? As far as the variance of the building, is there any objection, uh, to, uh, to, uh, the, the height of the building being changed to a higher than normal for code?
being changed to a higher than normal for code? Uh, answer yes or no?
No.
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 Okay, thank you. And now we have to address the, uh, special use, uh, which is the, one of the original, original reasons for, uh, this meeting tonight. Special use for the building itself, the construction of the building. Uh, the building is located at 14500 Costner Avenue, Milothean Park District. The building is, uh, in, is zoned open space and is presently improved and will be reconstructed. Uh, it'll be enlarged to accommodate field house and health club facilities, uh, facilities, uh, uh, the construction, uh, of the building and the, and the additional parking and updated landscape have all, already been addressed. And, uh, now we're going to ask the board itself whether or not, uh, they approve or disapprove of this special use. Item number one, uh, there is a proposal, a supposed, supposed special use, in fact, a special use authorizing in the zoning district in which the property is located. Does every, all, everybody on the board agree to that?
Yes.
Yes? Uh, item number two, proposed special use is deemed necessary for public convenience at this location. Do you agree or disagree?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use does not create excessive additional impacts at public expense for public facilities and services that will be beneficial to the economic welfare of the community. Do you find it yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed use is in conformance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and all village codes and regulations. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use would be designed, located, and operated and maintained so as to be harmonious and compatible in use and appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use is a suitable use of the property to generate income from an appropriate business, and without the special use, the property would be substantially diminished in value. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use will not significantly diminish the safety, use, enjoyment, and value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The property, the proposed special use is compatible with the development on adjacent property. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use minimizes potentially dangerous traffic movements and provides adequate and safe ingress and egress to the site. Yes or no?
Yes.
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 The proposed special use provides?
As long as. We've all talked about the improved, I mean, the additional amount of traffic. So we're aware of that in all larger buildings and property activities. So there will be more property, I mean, more traffic. The plans, I, I do agree that the plans do propose a safe way of egress and to import from the site. But understand that something that's larger is at different times when they have special programs will be in excess for a little bit, so I hope that the general public understands that, uh, that's why we have an adequate police force to direct traffic, and, um, that would be the only issue. But the way that they're constructing it does allow for them to get in and out. And nobody has shown or suggested any other negativity, so I'll say yes.
Item ten, the proposed special use provides the required number of parking spaces and maintain parking areas in accordance with the requirements of this title. Yes or no?
Yes, yes.
The proposed special use is served by adequate utilities, drainage, road access, public safety, and other necessary facilities. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed special use conforms with the requirements of this title and other applicable regulations. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
The applicant's experience, expertise, and previous ownership and/or management of similar businesses may be beneficial to the special use. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
And this special use otherwise complies with all the state statutes and village ordinances. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on the findings and reasons stated above, the Zoning Board of Appeals of Village Milothean recommends to the Village Board that the applicant's, application for special use be granted.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for clarification, uh, on the variance on the height of the building, I believe the board voted no in the manner of saying they did not object. For consistency and clarity, I think what the board should vote on is the height variance of six feet. Uh, is the board in favor of it or against it? I believe the vote should be affirmative as opposed to.
Oh, in favor of it, yes, okay, right.
Just for, just to avoid any confusion.
Height variance of six feet on the building? Do you agree with that?
Yes.
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 I thought that was just one of them. Read it first time.
I'll take a roll of the board now. Does the board, the board agree with the special use? Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Wazakowskis?
Yes.
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pringle?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith, yes.
Now. That being said, understand that this is a findings of this zoning board. We are only a zoning board, and we listened to all your recommendations and proposals and the illustrations. And in this case, we listen to citizens who live in the area. And it's our best judgment that when we make these decisions. However, this is only a proposal from us. We do not make the final decision. What we do with our recommendation is we give it to the Village Board, and the Village Board will then vote on it. And they will decide whether it will happen or it won't happen. I can say that the Village Board has a lot of faith in our decision, but I can't say yes or no. So that will have to be based, the final approval will have to be based on the Village Board. The, we have to get the paperwork together and submit it to the Village Board. It will not be for this coming meeting. Mr. Smith has quite a bit of work to do, and, uh, we do this on a voluntary basis, so he doesn't be paid sixty dollars an hour or anything like that, so. And not that that might not be a bad idea in the future. But that being said, little humor goes along with this. I'm sure that maybe by the following week we'll have the proposal for the Village Board, the deputy affairs.
Yeah, the fair, yeah, we, yeah, the.
So, two meetings from, the second meeting from this Wednesday, whatever the date is on an M F app. I'm sure that we'll have that proposal to the Village Board. At that time, they will make the final decision. So your answers will be start that. But they kinda, they like what we do. And we got Nick over here, our attorney, who tries to give us some help and comes up with all these professional things that are really, really expected. And if I think we would have stepped out of line, he would have raised his hand and called us a stop. Said something, that's his job, and he does a great job of that. We're fortunate enough tonight to have, uh, trustee and Village Mayor with us. Justice Carl Ivan and Village Mayor Larry LaRue was sitting back there taking in to see what kind of a job we're doing. So they get firsthand what you guys have said, which is important in making their decisions. And, uh, somebody mentioned that they had old timers living on their block. Well, I'm getting to be an old timer, so I know what you're, I know what you feel when you say you can't afford things. But I'll tell you what the bottom line is. If you stop and think about it, when it was proposed to the village and put in on the bond issue to be voted on, everybody seemed to like the idea, and I, I think it's a fabulous idea. I'm proud, I'm proud of this village, and I'm proud of what it stands for. I wanna make it look better. I wanna be any part of what makes it look better. And they've gone to extra lengths to make sure that it's for the protection of everybody. Nobody else has objected to anything, and if there's ever an objection, I hope you bring it in front of the board so we can discuss it. That being said, uh, I think we look for.
I need, I need a motion to, to adjourn the meeting from the board.
I make a motion that we adjourn? Second.
It's been, motion been made and seconded, the meeting is closed at, uh, somewhere in central time up there. Actually, it's seven twenty-four, seven twenty-four.
Thank you all for coming out.